I'd like to call to order the June 16, 2001, meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees, and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terry Slick, can you give us a roll call and recognition of visitors, please?
This evening's visitors include Richard Schroeder, Ann Arnott, and Kristen Babcock.
Thank you. That brings us to the first of our two petitions and communications section of tonight's agenda. The petitions and communications section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan on speaking. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak at the first or second petitions and communications sections, but not both. And prior to beginning the comments, we will ask you to state your name, your address, city, and state. And do we have anyone that would like to address the board at this time? Okay? If you could approach the podium, please. And your name, address, city, and state, please.
My name's John Winter. I live in Spring Hill, Kansas. I've been employed here at the college for a little over 22 years in the custodial department.
And John, your address, please.
209 North Frank.
Okay, thank you.
The first year that I was hired and worked here for the college, it was discussed about contract cleaning. And by the second year, I developed my thinking that if that was what was best for the community and for the college and for its patrons, I could easily be brought aboard on that. And I have had a commitment to the college that's neither shallow nor short. When I started working here, my oldest son was nine. I've had four sons now that have graduated from college, and I have three other, soon four family members, that have attended college here. And I see my grandchildren on a trajectory attending college here. I have, I bring a commitment to the community and to the college and to the college's vision, its mission, and its values. I visit those often on the webpage, and I like what I see. My loyalty to this college grew to another level when 10 years ago, the administration and board insisted that all of its employees would be paid at the industry standard and norm for the field and position for which they were employed. Like many others that work here for the college, I've gone two years without an increase in my hourly wage, but I feel confident that I'm still paid at the industry norm. The year before, I had a nickel in elevation in my pay. Bids for outsourcing the housekeeping department have been received, and the contract companies cannot reduce the cost of the consumables that the college requires. That's toilet paper, that's going to be paper towels, can liners, chemicals. And we really hope that if they're awarded the bid, they will not reduce the services. The only way the contract companies can make a profit is to reduce wages and benefits. So I'm really perplexed after making sure that we're paid equal to the industry norm. The college now entertains awarding a bid to a company that they know will have to pay us below the industry standard in order to be successful. And that appears so incongruent to the previous decisions and the values that we have published and owned. Such inconsistencies, I think, would damage this board's reputation and the college's Like most of you, I function daily in the social context of a family. And if at some point I decide that it's too expensive to live in the urban Kansas City area, and I decide to hand in my resignation three weeks, and then I contact a real estate agent to sell my house, and the first that my wife and my children hear about it is when they place a sign in the yard and call to be able to show the house. They're going to wonder, what's up with Dad? And their confidence and their trust in me is going to start cascading. And as soon as they can, most of my kids are going to find a way to get off of the bus that I'm driving. Three months ago was the only communication we received concerning this process. We were assured that we all had a job till July, and that's now two weeks away. And the lack of being included in the communication process has taken a toll on our department. As would be anticipated, there's a precipitous decline in morale, in self dignity, in trust and confidence toward the process that has left us, not just us, but also our families, twisting on a spit. All of us, it doesn't matter what job we have, all of us, there is somebody out there that is, that has the ability to convince the rest of us that he or she can do your job cheaper, more effectively, and more efficiently, and better than you can. They may not be able to do that, but they have the skill to convince the rest of us that they can. And over the years that I've been employed at the college, numerous educational institutions in the Kansas City area have been persuaded to use contract cleaning, only to discover to their dismay the mistake and how costly it was to their budgets and their people to try to reestablish the house, the custodial house cleaning department. I'm asking the board to set in motion a process to do the investigation, the interviewing, to ascertain and understand why so many educational institutions, once they were enticed into contract cleaning, chose to return to in-house cleaning. I sure don't want, and I'm sure you all don't want us to be the next one on a growing list of educational facilities that had to learn by mistake and experience why contract cleaning did not fit their needs or their values. I've really appreciated the boards that I have been allowed to serve under. I pray that I would be one that would be diligent and faithful in the duties that I perform here at the college, and I pray that for this board also, be faithful and diligent in the duties that the electorate has given you.
John, thank you.
Hi again. I'm Jenelle Rowe. I work at 433 North Center, Gardner, Kansas. For months, I work custodial as well. For months, we've come to work doing our jobs with a huge axe over our heads. The lack of communication from administration has been extremely stressful and frustrating. Wondering each day, is this the last day, they say? Is this the day they say, don't come back? We watch these companies come in and do their free trials, and wonder if the budget was passed, why are they still doing this? As far as hiring on with a new company, I don't see how taking a 40 percent, almost 40 percent decrease in pay with no benefits, not just myself, but my partner, who also works in this department, you are effectively taking away a whole income out of our home. We would have to move. Another structural concern is the fact that these would technically be terminations. And the standing policy of this college is not to give any employee the notice ahead of time, to bring him in on a Friday and to cut him there. I think we deserve a little bit better than that. I think we deserve some notice ahead of time so that we can make plans for our families, our kids. We have to make decisions. So I pray that at least we get some heads up, and not just to come in on a Friday and be told, don't come back Monday. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the board at this time?
My name's Andre Gilbo. It's 23500 West 73rd Street, Shawnee, Kansas. A couple of days ago, I got an email from another employee here at the college asking, confirming whether I was going to be at the pen ceremony for my 15-year pen coming up in August. And I had to reply to her that I wasn't sure whether I would be on campus or not at that Because we had been left primarily in the dark on what was going on with the contract The, um, the lack of flow of information has been kind of disturbing to me and others in my department, and like John said, the morale has gone down significantly. Uh, you don't, we don't see the high fives, you know, after we've completed a shift now, the, you know, hand slapping, the hey, you know, everybody's doing a good job thing that we used to see it, what, just six, eight months ago. And it's, it's, it makes it harder, harder to do your job. The other thing I would ask is a board, is that, uh, the, at least in the media lately, now, you may not think there have been any bad decisions made here in the last few years, but the college has been portrayed as making bad decisions. Administration has been portrayed as making some bad decisions in the last few years. Please hold them accountable to the decisions that they make, to the things that they bring to you to vote on as a board. Investigate. Make sure that you're making a good decision. Because, and if, 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 uh, if this is, this may be the way to go. It may be, it may be a good thing for the college financially and what have you. I don't think it's a good way to go as far as the college family goes, but financially, it may be a good way to go. But if it ends up being the wrong thing, hold your administrators accountable for their decisions, for the decisions that they have made, the things that they brought to you, the way that they have turned the college. The legal department, hold the legal department accountable for the decisions that they, the recommendations that they've made. If, if, you know, if we've got, if we've got a legal department that apparently, it just seems like we're going to court when we shouldn't, we're settling when we should, you know, we're settling things that we should go to court on, and we're going to court on things that we shouldn't even think about. Um, I'm getting off the subject there about the custodial department, but, um, just basically, make sure this is the right decision before, before you vote yes, and just, and just do away with, with college employees as custodial, as your custodial services. If you have a contract company come in here, whether we're rebadged or whether we're gone, you're going to have less, uh, less pride in what's going on here from, on a day-to-day basis. And, uh, you're gonna, you're going to, you're gonna have less response, people are not going to feel, feel like it's their area that they're cleaning. It's their, you know, it's their, uh, it's their college. They're gonna, it's, it's going to be, this is a, this is a task to do, I gotta do it, I'm gonna get, do it just as fast as I can and as easy as I can, and get out of here and get to the next one. Uh, you know, I take pride and responsibility for the area that I clean. I, uh, you know, there've been mentions of candy wrappers sitting on floor, in corners or floors or under something for three months. Hopefully, that's not happening in my area. I try not to, you know, I try to look under everything. And I just, uh, I just think that if you, if you go with contract cleaning, you're, you're gonna get less of a pride in ownership of the people doing the job. They're just not gonna, they're just not gonna own their job, you know, it's, and if you are gonna rebadge, if rebadging is an option in this contract, if there's a mention of it, please make sure there's a clause that allows us to get out and still get, still get out of the situation and, and take an unemployment option, because I don't want to be forced to work for somebody that I don't know, just because the wage and benefits are almost the same, you know, or market standard, or what, you know, however they're gonna put it in the contract. And I hope I'm here to get that pen in August. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? All right, before I close the communications petitions section, I want to make two comments. The first is that this part of the agenda is not intended to be a debate section, but it's intended for the board to, to hear the comments from, from the audience. So, so thank you for that. But having said that, I do want to make a comment and just say that the board will be approaching this particular topic with a great deal of deliberation and careful study, and we will be weighing very heavily both the human and financial costs of this bid, should it be approved by the board. And additionally, I will be asking for an update when the management committee report comes later in the agenda, and I encourage you to, to stay for that. So, do we have any other board members that would like to make a comment at this time? All right, then I'll close the communications and petitions section. We will have another one later on in the, the agenda, and we'll move to awards and recognition. And Dana, do you have anything for me this evening?
No, we have no.
Okay. In that case, I am truly honored to talk about Lynn Mitchellson. For, for those of you that are available, there will be a reception in Lynn's honor tomorrow, Friday, at June 17, 2011, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the Carlson lobby. And before we go to the podium over there, for those of you that may not know, Lynn has served on the Board of Trustees for 15 years, and this is his, his last meeting. And he will be very much missed by the board, and me in particular. He's been a terrific friend and a terrific mentor for, for new trustees coming on the board. For those of you that might be interested in some of the highlights and some of the differences that Lynn has made while serving on this Board of Trustees, he was involved in hiring two new presidents for the college, our interim president and also our permanent president, Dr. Callaway. Anybody just walking around the campus is going to not be able to notice the difference that Lynn has made in this organization with the construction of new buildings, particularly the Student Center, the Field House, the Police Academy, the Rainier Center, the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art, additions to the Heiersteiner Child Development Center, the parking garage at Galileo's Garden, in addition to the Science Building, a partnership with the Aletha Medical Center that will lead to the opening of the Aletha Health Education Center this fall, participating in a successful fundraising campaign to support the new Culinary Center, which we'll be hearing an update on again later this evening, the creation of the Healthcare Simulation Center, creation of the Campus Police Center, and finally, the college's reputation for fiscal responsibility, as evidenced by its AAA bond rating, as well as innumerable contributions to academic excellence at this. And John, I believe I was going to ask you to speak first, so I apologize for that, but I carried away by the moment.
You probably took everything I was going to say away, but that's okay. No. My comments are, I've, it's been a privilege to serve with Lynn Mitchellson for, now, this is seven years for me, but I had the additional benefit of Lynn's mentorship because he hired me back in 1980 to work for him. So I know Lynn very well, and I know his commitment and his ethics, his attention to detail. As many of you know, the attention to detail and the ability to ask the very tough questions and, and to really come to a decision that, to do the right thing. And that's what the qualities that Lynn brings, and that's what I've had the privilege of being around for, for many, many years. And his involvement with the college goes back more than 15 years. I know he was involved in the foundation, but I can tell you, when I found my job in 1980, I went to the Job Center here at the college and found a posting from a new bank. Lynn wasn't familiar enough with the college at that point to put a posting for a part-time employee at the college. So he was very active in the college for many years, and we're gonna miss him, miss him a lot, and hopefully, there are a few rounds of golf in there for myself, at least, to play with Lynn. But you contributed immensely, served on many, many, all, probably all the committees, but he's very dedicated, developed a relationship around the state with other trustees and presidents of college, and where before we might not have been as respected, or we were certainly the envy of, of the state, Lynn reached out and made some relationships there to make a very big difference in the KECT organization and your involvement on J-Cert. But Lynn is very dedicated, and we're gonna miss him, and I wish him well in his golf retirement. He's actually not retired, but he's still working, I guess.
Right. Thank you.
If I could ask Lynn for you to join John and I at the podium?
This is part of the agenda where we get his badge and his key.
Be sure to get the VIP parking pass first.
Right, right. Lynn, we have two items for you. A plaque that states sincere appreciation for contributions and service to the college and community as a member of our Board of Trustees, 1996 through 2011. So we'll give you that first.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And a card from, from the trustees that you can read at your leisure.
Okay, thank you.
And also, a very exciting present here, which we will let you open.
All right. Try not to destroy this wrapping paper.
Right.
It's about the size of a basket. Wouldn't that be something?
Okay. And that is a piece by Mark Erle from the Nerman Museum Store, which Lynn had a signature for in the creation of the Nerman Museum. And so, Dr. Callaway, I don't know if there's any other background information you can provide on this piece?
Well, one thing I would provide is that there's a top to it somewhere inside that box.
I was so sure it was a basketball, I just put it out.
The basketball and golf gear will be tomorrow. But, uh, the young man who's, the artist who created that piece has actually been a student here at our college and moved on to KU. We know both of those institutions hold a warm place in your heart, and is now very, very successful here in our community and also nationally. And Bruce Hartman wanted us to tell you that, in fact, he's been so successful, Bruce owns two of his pots, so you're in good company. As you all know, Bruce has such a good eye for art, so we congratulate you on behalf of the college and the administration, faculty, staff, and, and thank you for your great work, as John mentioned, your integrity and all that you did to make us such a better place. So, thank you.
And if we could, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody. I really enjoyed, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this college. And as John said, I started back in the early 80s when we had a foundation of less than $200,000. We had Al Barton doing the job that Joe and Kate have done, and we had a volunteer, Marge Lichter, who was our chairman, and we got by on a little annual auction, and we went from there to raise over $20 million in the foundation. So, and I've been honored, I've had a passion for, ever since I was introduced to the college by Dr. Callaway, or, excuse me, Dr. Carlson, and Dick Bond, who invited me to come over here. And our bank, as John said, was just down the street, so it was a convenient drive. And there's something about what happens at Johnson County, it, I think Senator Moran and Dr. Callaway talked on the 20th of May at our graduation ceremony about how this college transforms lives. And if you're not careful, Greg, and others, it will transform the lives of volunteers as well as those who are students here. It really has been a wonderful experience, and I don't intend to be a stranger, I just won't be up here on the Board of Trustees. So, thank you all so very much. I've enjoyed working with everybody, and it's been, it's been a delight. I can't imagine not coming here every month, but I'll figure out how to do that. I have another passion now. I'm working with a distressed bank in my hometown of Baxter Springs, and it is a full-time commitment, being chairman and CEO of a bank that's under regulatory enforcement actions, as many are around the country. I think there are 880-some that are in this category out of about 7,000 banks. So, there's, there's enough to keep me busy right there, and I'm so glad that we have tremendous leadership of this board. I can feel like leaving this Board of Trustees, and we've had great trustees, including the founding trustees, who are a very impressive board with Will Billington and Jack Robinson and, and Dr. Hugh Spear, who I got to replace. But I think right now, with the leadership of Dr. Callaway and this Board of Trustees and all the people in this room, this college has, has the greatest opportunities it's ever had in the history of, of its formation, going back to the late 60s, early 70s. So, my congratulations to this Board of Trustees and to Greg Muzel, who will come into the spot that I've had, and I know it's going to do even bigger and brighter things in the future. I look forward to seeing it happen in this community. It's a great college. Thank you.
And once again, if you can make the, the reception tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:30 in the lobby of the Carlson Center, I highly encourage you to, to do so and express your appreciation to Lynn for his, his very long 15 years and more of service. So, thank you again. All right, that moves us to our college lobbyist report. And Mr. Carter, is he with us today?
Mr. Carter's not with us today. He's in Washington, DC, representing us in a couple of meetings there, but we do have under tab one, his, his report to the board, as he did report in this one-page document. The legislature did gather for signee die on the 1st of June and moved forward into recess. The, the items that I think he discussed at the last meeting pretty much were the bulk of what's been going on, and, and we could answer any questions any of the board members may have, but as you see, the report is very, very short this month.
Okay.
So we sent him off to Washington.
Okay. All right. Seeing no questions or comments from the board, we will move to our committee reports and recommendations, and we'll begin very briefly with nominating a committee and without getting into any details of, of who will be nominated for, for what positions. Those will come at our July meeting, when we'll be voting on new officers, and new committees, and new liaisons for the board for, for the following year. And we will do, do that after the, the new board has been in ceded, and Lynn will be leaving us, and Greg Muzel will be joining us. And so I do know that the committee that I've tasked with coming up with the nominations has been very busy with that, and I look forward to hearing their report next month. And with that, we will move to the, the management committee report and trustee Dr. Drummond.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a few opening comments about the fine people who spoke before us tonight, and then defer some other comments to Dr. Callaway regarding timeline. So I would suggest to our folks that this is very serious business for us, and probably it's not been as quick as you perhaps would like to have it to be, but we're being very, very careful. The trustees have not studied the information yet. We don't have the information yet, because we have charged administration with making sure to do all of their due diligence and do a very good job in evaluating the process and entities in the process, and our services, and all of those kinds of things. and entities in the process and our services and all of those kinds of things. So, we're being very careful, very diligent, making sure that whatever decision we make is in the best interest of the college, best interest of employees of the college, and most of all, it fits our mission very, very tightly. So, again, I want to express my personal appreciation for your energies and for your time and for your willingness to come before this board tonight and express your opinions and concerns. We really do appreciate that. With that being said, Dr. Callaway, if you could make a few brief comments about the timeline that's unfolding, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond. For all the board members, the members of the community, the college is right about on track from a timing perspective of where we expected we would be as of this point in the process. We did have bid opening and then five groups were invited in to do presentations to a committee of, broad-based committee of individuals who are, who have now had those presentations. In fact, those presentations, I believe, were last week. Our representatives from Cabinet who were in attendance at those meetings were gone earlier part of this week. In fact, Dr. Grove is back as of today. Dr. Corb has still gone through the rest of this week. And so, on Monday at Cabinet, then we'll have a presentation from them, and it'll be really the first time that the leadership team sees and hears what the, you know, what the bids look like, what the process looks like, and where we happen to be standing at the time. And then it would be our intention to, as I've communicated to a couple of you today, bring forward a, basically a presentation to each of the board committees, because each committee will have some interest from your own particular perspective, be it HR, management, learning quality. We'll be doing a presentation to each of those committees, so you can ask questions about the overarching process, but also how those issues specifically affect the issues that affect your committee. And then plan to do a full presentation, public presentation, although our committee meetings, as you all know, are also open. But a full public presentation then at the next board meeting, and then start to take under consideration what some of our options might be and what timing might be. So, at this stage, I think the message is pretty similar to what we heard earlier, which is we haven't really gathered, we've gathered a lot of information, but we haven't had the chance to really look at it or share it, not only with the administration, but also with this board and the college community. And at such a time as we see that, probably the first part of next week, then we'll be in a better position to start to distribute information. But at this stage, we don't have anything that we really can distribute to you. And those who were able to participate in the presentation have been gone. So, they'll be back on Monday, we'll have that full presentation, then start to begin to brief the board committees and community as a whole.
Thank you very much. Trustee Cook?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just make a comment. I appreciate all of that. I think what I heard tonight and what I've heard on the telephone is a common denominator of not knowing what the process is. And we have, what, about 100 people, I think, in that department? And I'm not suggesting, Dr. Callaway, that you need to have that direct communication, but it seems to me like some of this angst could be avoided with two-way communication within the department. And I know there's nothing to say about where we are with the process of making a decision, but it seems like there's more anxiety about not knowing what the future will be, even in the process itself. So, I would just encourage that that communication takes place within the department, so that these people can have some questions answered that are able to be answered. And the decision of whether we do or not go to privatization is, we're not there. But it seems like there's some really anxiety about what that potential could be.
I would, I don't disagree with you at all. In fact, you know, we'll make sure that some of that communication does happen. I would just say, though, that as we started to investigate this process, I held a town hall meeting with all of the members of the housekeeping crew who were interested in joining us. I think we probably had 90 out of the 100 individuals there that evening. Our timeframe is exactly where we said that evening we would be, which is, we would be, not really have much information to share until we start to get the information and feedback. So, our timeframe isn't any different than we shared with them back when we first started the process and the conversation. We said probably the earliest a decision would be made in July or August with no change in anyone's status in the September to maybe even October timeframe. That's probably exactly where we are, but we don't even know what we could share with them, other than, you know, timing. You know, we're very open to whatever the conversation might be, and as I shared with you on the phone, certainly we'll make sure that we have some additional communication sometime next week, as soon as we see where we are Monday, so we can share information. But our timeframe hasn't changed from what we shared in the very earliest parts of the conversation.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
I'm not sure that the stress level will go down until the decision is made, because the uncertainty is the problem. And so, I think I'd encourage you to bring it forward sooner than later and let's get the decision made, because they won't sleep at night till that's done, so.
We do have some timing requirements statutorily related to bid processes and all of that, but we can certainly fast-track it from here on out.
Yeah.
And if that's the board's desire, we certainly can do that. And I'm fine, I mean, we're fine either way. We'll speed it up, and I think there is some, you know, good rationale, trustee Stewart, for that kind of a process, because, you know, we're wanting to be reasonable about this, too. We don't know where the decision's going to go. We really don't. If we did, you know, we could do that, but we will, we will fast-track it now as best we can.
I want to ensure that that fast-track process doesn't short-circuit any of the deliberateness and carefulness of the process. Trustee Rail?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment briefly. I think that the transparency and openness of the administration has created a little bit of this angst, because rather than wait until the 11th hour to reveal that this was being done, you know, we've been very open and the administration's been very open from the beginning, and, you know, that does create a certain amount of angst, and unfortunately, we all have to work through that process. But I also wanted to mention, one of the things that I've heard from Mr. Winter and the other folks that I've talked to about this issue is kind of this repeated claim that other public entities have made the move from internal custodial services to outsourcing those services, and then for whatever reason have reversed course and gone back to the way it was being done before. And I would be curious when the issues come before the various committees to find out if there's a basis for that, if in fact that has happened, and if it has, kind of anecdotally, what the reason was for those entities that made that decision to handle things the way they did. Because certainly, if there's some validity to the premise that we don't want to make the same mistake that other folks have made, clearly, learning from others' mistakes has its benefits. So, I would just be interested in hearing when we get to that phase, if we can discover that, kind of what has transpired with other areas, entities in the area, so.
I want to make sure that we give full voice to this issue at this time for what we knew. Do we have any other trustees that would like to comment at this time? All right, trustee Drummond, please continue then with your report.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. And I would just add comments to what you said, Mr. Chair, regarding the deliberateness of the process. We want to make it as quick as we can, but we want to make sure every leave is turned over and we examine all the processes and options, and as trustee Rail said, to make sure that we've done our homework, so that we don't come back two years from now and decide to turn things around, if in fact, any of that happens. Moving forward with the management report, our committee report, you'll find behind tab three, pages three through 28, our committee. We met on the 14th, and you'll find our recommendations on pages seven through 22 on the board packet. We'll make 12 recommendations to the trustees tonight. Collectively, these recommendations add up to about $1.1 million. So, I will go through each one of these individually, as laborious as that is. We're talking about quite a bit of money, so I think that's appropriate. Beginning with the first recommendation, we're talking about the retention of the bond council. These, this is one of the recommendations that doesn't cost us any money unless we act on it. And essentially, what we're recommending is that we continue with the same bond council that we've had in the past, Gilmore and Bell. They've served us very well at the college. They will serve as our council. We will only engage them when in fact we have work for them to do. They're not on retainer. We will use them. They will charge fees only when we're in the process of doing some bond work and give us advice on closing and help us with the closing process. With that being said, it's the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the retention of Gilmore and Bell as bond council for the fiscal year 2012. And I would so make that a motion.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the fee basis, I recall those are set by the language of each individual bond transaction, and they're kind of fixed as it relates to that bond. Is that not correct?
I believe so.
Yes.
Thank you.
We get an opportunity to negotiate, so we don't have to accept what the first proposal.
All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second recommendation pertains to the retention of our financial advisor. That's on page eight. We desire to reappoint Piper Jaffray as our financial advisor of the college. They've served in this capacity very well for the past several years. They help us with a lot of different issues in the financing part, our revenue sources, cash flows, amortization schedules, and other advice that we can get from them. Fees for serving as a financial advisor are only payable at the time of closing. It is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the retention of Piper Jaffray for, as financial advisor for fiscal year 2012. And I would so move that, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Third recommendation is retention of our college lobbyist. That's on page nine. We had an evaluation done on our college lobbyist, and you received an executive summary of that somewhere in your packet, probably tonight. We had good discussion about his services. We are very satisfied with what he's done with us, particularly at the federal level the past several years. Total compensation expenses are the very same as they were last year. It is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees approve the recommendation of the college administration to approve the retention of the Carter Group Incorporated as the college lobbyist for fiscal year 2011 and 12, for a total of $71,645 plus expenses in an amount not to exceed $8,600. And I would so move that, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Trustee Sharp?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman. I had a constituent call and asked me what the renewal on this contract was, and actually some of the other contracts as well, in terms of when do we go out for RFP? Do we have a regular schedule of going out for RFP on this?
We, if I might, Mr. Chairman, to trustee Sharp's question. We do have, we did go out for RFP and as a result, since my tenure began here, and a lot of that had to do with the pretty unhappy situation we had with our previous lobbyists, quite frankly. We did go out for RFP. We're not required to do that, because it's one of the services that can just be contracted for, but we did go out for RFP. We probably would look at doing an RFP next year, because this would have now given us, I believe, our third year of service.
Fourth.
Fourth year of service with Mr. Carter.
Okay.
And just to take a look at all, at, you know, the kind of work he's done. But one of the things we've done is to start an evaluation process for this kind of a service, and in fact, we do the same with the leave council. But we did do a written, our evaluation this time. We've been very pleased with his work, and so we've decided to move over for one more year. But I do think it's time for us to, you know, after four years, probably do another RFP. When we did do the RFP last time, his services actually were only the best bid, but the lowest bid, and significantly less than what we were paying in the past. And I think his service has been just exemplary. But we do have a process for that. We're not required to, but it would be our intention to do that.
Thank you. I agree. I think he's done an excellent job, and I just think for transparency and accountability's sake, it's good for us to go out for RFP for these types of contracts, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Mitchellson?
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to that just a moment. In the 15 years that I've been on the board, we've had three different lobbyists, and each time we've made a change, we've improved our situation dramatically. And I frankly am very, very impressed with what Dick Carter's done for us, not only in Washington and Topeka, but just in general, his knowledge of all the individuals who represent this college and how he can influence, to the best, monies that flow to this college. He's really done a superb job, and he's easy to work with. I think we've made an improvement every time we've changed, and I don't know that we're going to find anybody any better than what we've got now.
But it's always good to look. And it's always good to do the due diligence, and I think that that would be appropriate next year. And, you know, just having that evaluation process and really being able to see what are the strengths and the opportunities to get better, I think, truly help us.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving to the fourth recommendation on pavement and concrete restoration, find that on page 10 of your packet. We have a very beautiful campus, but it's not beautiful just because it's beautiful, it's because we make it beautiful. And this is one of those things that we have to continue to do to deal with deferred maintenance and make our campus beautiful. So, this is pavement and concrete work that we need across several places on campus. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve a bid of $353,777.38 from McConnell and Associates Incorporated, plus an additional $25,000 to allow for contingency for unforeseen costs, for total expenditure not to exceed $378,777.38 for pavement and concrete restoration. And I so move that.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second, and I do have one, a very brief question. The text here indicates that the, that there are 32 zones across the campus. Is that meant to imply that there are more than 32 zones and that this vendor is only going to do those 32, or that the entire campus is broken up into 32 zones?
I think we should call Rex up, and he can address the 32 zones.
Yeah, well, we divided this project into 32 zones, and the main reason we did that was for, to make sure that we had a budget to cover the areas that we identified. So, if the bid came into high and exceeded our budget, then we would only do X amount of zones, and we prioritize those zones, and they're prioritized by concrete repairs and asphalt, so various locations on the campus.
But the entire campus is covered by these 32 zones?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. That answers my question. Thank you. Trustee Cook?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We're having a number of bids that have contingencies applied to them, and I think I have a two-part question. Sometimes those contingencies are 10%, sometimes they're less, sometimes they're more. And usually, my understanding of a contingency is it's there because we're not sure what we might find behind that wall or under the soil if we do a project. First part, how is the contingency amount determined? And then, I'm more interested in what the internal controls are for approving contingency payments to the contractor.
Rex?
As you suggested, you know, for unforeseen problems that we would see, in this case it would be a little gray. The contractor does not see this contingency. It's not part of their contract, so they don't see it's controlled by me. And, so they don't see it, and this $25,000 for this particular project was based on budget. We didn't have enough budget to buy 10%, so I had $25,000 identified, because that's the amount of budget I could address for this project.
And as I understand, Rex, if I could interject here, trustee Cook, you're very tight on administering these additional funds. They have to have a very good reason.
Right.
Approved by you in order to tap into the contingency. Does that, do I understand that correctly?
Well, would you, would it be fair to say that industry standard practice would be a 10% contingency?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because I think the perception could be, the more we have contingencies on bids, the more there's the potential for the contractor, and another contractor may have bid a very base bid and didn't anticipate the contingency. So, I'm pleased to hear that we're very sensitive to internal control of payable out of the contingency accounts, and it's just not a free pot of money that a contractor may have access to.
Yeah, I think the control is important, because you said they don't see it, but if they would happen to read our minutes, they would see it. So, chances of that are probably slim, but they, but.
I still have to prove.
The other question is, we only had one bid.
Yeah, that was.
What's up with that? Does, nobody else want to do the work?
This is the time of year where there's a lot of schoolwork going on, so there's a lot of work, and so that's part of it. The other part of it, you know, due to the economy in recent years, I think a lot of these times... I think a lot of these companies have downsized, so they're not able to bid on as many projects as they have in the past. And, you know, for an asphalt repair project, this is pretty small. You know, I called Matt Canetti and talked to him, and he says, "It's just a small project, and for me, it's too small to bid on."
So when you came up with the estimate, was it some sort of book you go out of that this is what this ought to cost based upon this many square feet of?
Yeah, and we have a consultant that helped us develop this project, the specification for this project, based on their experience.
Well, maybe that's a good sign for the economy, if there, if there either too much work to bid on, or?
Also, last year, we only had one bid for this same type of project.
I know we've had several lately that's just been one bid, the library, I think, or something else. Okay.
Yeah, I think Rex makes a good point. From contractors I've talked to, they've so reduced their workforce that there's only so many jobs they can do. And so they're sensitive on bidding on the jobs they think they can make the most profit on. And so you're not, we're not seeing as many bids overall as we did just last year.
Right.
I think the workforce part and the reduction of employees in the company has affected this.
All right, any other discussion? In that case, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to recommendation five, concrete pavers repairs. That's on page 12 and 13 of your booklet. Again, more repairs because of the environment we live in. There's just a lot of issues that occur in our concrete area, et cetera, pavers in particular. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $170,000 from NW Rogers Construction Incorporated with an additional $17,000 to allow for contingencies for unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed[725.84][725.86]$187,000 for concrete paper repairs, and I would so move that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item six is masonry repairs on page 14. This project includes repairs of flashing and masonry on the ITC building and the WLB building in different parts of that building. So it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $181,000 from MTS Contracting Incorporated, plus an additional $15,100 to allow for the contingencies for unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed $196,100 for ITC and WLB masonry repairs, and I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The seventh recommendation is Cisco Maintenance, page 15 of your packet. This is for basic maintenance for switches, hubs, chassis that are located across campus. Recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $153,457.55 from DataLink Corporation for the annual contract for the Cisco Maintenance, and I would so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommendation eight is disk-to-disk backup solution, page 16. This is a purchase will allow replicated backup of data from two data centers and reduce the disk capacity by using de-duplication. Now, if you understand that, you're a lot smarter than me, but it sounds like a good thing to me. It is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from DataLink Corporation in the amount of $76,830 for the purchase of disk-to-disk backup solution, and I so move. Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All right, we have both motions and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next recommendation is for upgrades and reconfiguration to our platform. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal for ITS Partners LLC for Senac Consulting Services in the amount not to exceed $65,000, and I would so move that.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We've been consistent in listing the people who provided bids, or even if they did not bid, and I'm curious why we didn't list the responses of the five people that bid this project.
Mitch?
Right, but we don't list what they bid.
The pricing, you mean?
Right.
The reason we haven't on this is it was an RFP, so there was various criteria in addition to pricing that factored into the decision. I can tell you that the recommendation is a little bit, but it's not truly an apples-to-apples comparison to list the pricing.
I just would encourage us when we can to list the pricing. It's helpful, for me at least, to see what the difference is. And I realize there are several other criteria that could be included in an RFP. Thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, recommendation 10, it's renewal of annual contract for travel services. As you might recall from last year, this, we've set aside $120,000, but that will be used on an incremental basis, and it may not exceed that. And this past year, it fell short. It looks like it fell short of that. So this is for a travel service. It is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation, the college administration, to approve the renewal of annual contract for travel services from Egenta, an Expedia company, Incorporated Company, to include transaction fees plus the cost of airfare, rental cars, lodging at an annual expenditure anticipated not to exceed $120,000. And I just might add, we talked about internal controls in this particular contract, and we seem to have very good internal controls at the college so that people who want to travel have to have a lot of authorization before they can do that. With that being said, I would move this recommendation.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The 11th recommendation, medical models for Olathe Health Education Center. So it's part of the budget to build up the educational center in Olathe. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the lowest acceptable bids of $106.21 from the Carolina Biological Supply Company, $3,239.05 from Sergeant Welch VWR, and $62,541.73 from Awards in National Science for a total expenditure of $65,886.99 for the purchase of medical models for the Olathe Health Education Center. And I would so move that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I want to complement the detail. Thank you. Well done. Thank you.
All right. I see no other discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is a recommendation you've all been looking for. It's an annual contract for Apple Trainer. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the establishment of annual contracts for certified Apple Trainers within Bolser and Lipra Media LLC, and an annual expenditure anticipated not to exceed $104,850, and I would so move.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I really hate to be a pest tonight, but just a question. We have a very talented faculty. Is it not possible for any of our faculty to be Apple certified? Or is this such a training that, and it's a full-time task to perform these? Well, I guess my question is, why are we contracting this out and not having a faculty member do this?
Much of the train that would come through this kind of a contract is actually contract training that we would do for external entities through our continuing education program. So we might have someone who would come in and do a training all day for five days. And because of the nature of how that works, then it isn't always consistent with our faculties, you know, schedules and capability, because they're teaching, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from X time to Y time. And so there are challenges that, what this does is provide us with the flexibility and also the talent to do more of that kind of contract training. We do have faculty who do teach in our continuing education area. Schedules allow and timing allows them, and how it works out financially. So what this does is give us the capacity to do some of that training in a more customized environment for those entities that need it. And this would also be a contract that is not to exceed based on the use of the individuals who are listed there.
Thank you, thank you.
Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a quick question about the number of firms that are responding to a couple of these tech, you know, data, data backup, a couple of the tech bids. I'm wondering if the local newspaper isn't going to get us the most? I mean, there are hundreds of people in Kansas City who could, who would fit this bill and would be a very affordable bid, but they're not going to be looking in the newspaper for? I'm wondering if there are other ways that we can advertise, especially tech opportunities, to a more tech-friendly audience that's traditionally not going to read the newspaper? Maybe that's a question for Mitch, or for?
Yes, we try to post bids on our webpage, on the procurement webpage also. Some of them are limited because there's only certain resellers within geographical areas that can sell the products that we're buying. And that's happened, I think, with one or two of these today. But we try to hammer type these people, like I mentioned. You may be in a business, vendors who contact us, and we make sure they get invited to bid. We put them on our webpage whenever we can. So we try different ways to make them know.
That would be something that, you know, even the community college, whomever handles their Twitter accounts and Facebook accounts could tweet out, "Hey, did you see this job opportunity, this bid opportunity for an Apple expert to come in and train on our website?" You know, because a lot of people aren't going to go specifically, if they're not looking specifically at a job at Johnson County Community College, they're not going to go specifically to our website to look for it. So that would be a good opportunity to use social media to get more bids, lower bids. Just a thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. And before we vote on it, just one other comment. I would encourage all the other trustees to jump in with their seconds. I'm not sure John needs to second every single one of them, but feel free to jump in.
As a management committee member, that probably makes sense to second it.
Okay, very good then.
You know, and it does mean something to me that the two committee members that were listening to all of these proposals are both in favor of doing it, and that that's kind of the reason for that.
Okay.
And just to clarify, I actually missed that meeting.
John, I think you should have stopped while you were ahead.
I didn't want to leave the thing.
But he reads his patch.
All right, with that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the bids for the night. But I just might draw your attention on pages 23, 24. You'll see the capital acquisitions and improvements status report. All projects appear to be on time and schedule and budget, so we're in pretty good shape there. We review that very comprehensively every month. In addition, on page 25, 26, you'll see your IT infrastructure plan. Again, we spend considerable time going over that. Denise Moore does an excellent job in keeping us up to date and maneuvering all these things. It's a significant job, and it takes a lot of expertise and a lot of energy. And her and her staff do a wonderful job keeping everything running as we expect it to be. So I want to point that, all of that out to you. With that being said, that concludes our report for the evening. Ask your questions.
Thank you. All right, learning quality, Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Learning Quality Committee met on Monday, the 6th, at 8:00 a.m., and had a good conversation about student engagement measures. There are two surveys for which the community college participates, one with overall current students and another with incoming freshman students to sort of measure and benchmark against our community college colleagues across the country how engaged students are. And it's anything from asking a question in class to communicating with a professor via email or visiting a class website, attending a campus event, joining a club, et cetera. And I don't know if we've posted those, have we posted those flyers on the website? Does anybody know? Are our handouts? No? Okay.
The information is posted on the IR website, IR portal for the website.
Okay, so is it publicly accessible, though, to this?
I don't know.
Okay. It's just interesting, interesting data to see where we measure. It was a very good conversation. I don't know, it seems like the survey costs a lot for us to do, and maybe we're looking at doing something internally, which may be a cost saver, or we may be able to get some of the same data from it. That's an ongoing conversation. And we also had a conversation about a civility statement, which you'll find a lot of public organizations going to. One wouldn't think that you would have to state that we should all be civil to each other. But as we all know, in this heightened time of public involvement, everyone isn't always civil, for lack of a better, for another word. I don't know if, this civility statement is in the board packet. I would encourage all of you to take a look at it. It's very, very basic, but just the fact that we're planning, once it kind of moves through all of the processes, to post it in some very obvious places so that everyone knows what it means to work here, to go to school here, to be on our campus, what the expectations are in terms of your behavior towards others.
May I say something on that?
Please.
I'm very impressed with what the administration has come up with here in terms of a positive statement about what expectations are about behavior on the campus. The other way to go about it is to set up rules and say, "Thou shalt not do this, and thou shall not do that." And I think all of us have seen in the private sector and in the public sector, when values are posted, and they're prominently posted, and they show up in a number of places, I think it affects behavior. You begin to kind of say, "Oh, this is the way things are done at this business enterprise, or this company, or this organization." I think this is a wonderful idea, and those areas, like the parking lot, where confrontations could occur, it'd be nice to look up when you're about to say something to the guy that just cut you off. Oh, there's a sign that says, "I will be civil, and I'll take responsibility." And I really think it does affect behavior, so, well done, whoever's come up with this idea.
As valuable as parking is here, we probably should post it at the entrance to every parking lot. We also discussed a really exciting opportunity that we've been presented with to host the League for Innovation Board Meeting here next October, which is a lot of lead time, but this is a huge deal to be able to host this event, to host representatives from our partner, League of Innovation Schools, here on campus. It is October 2nd, the best day of the year, in case you're wondering, through October 5th of next year, and it, like I said, it will be here, oh, I'm sorry, not on campus. It's going to be downtown. I forgot about that.
No, no, no. Yeah, it's going to be on campus here.
Okay.
Yeah, you're referring to the.
The next event. Okay, the convention is here in town. Partnering with MCC.
Correct.
Okay, and that's, they're all within a month or two of each other?
They're in the same month.
In the same month, okay. Sorry, I remember they were a couple of, they were close together in terms of schedule. It'll be a very, very busy week, and I'm glad I'm not an event planner on campus. The last thing that we discussed was additions to curriculum and changes to curriculum. There were three very interesting small business courses or certificates added to the curriculum this past meeting. Direct sales, family business, and franchising. 12 and 13 credits each, I believe, if I remember correctly. Just enabling some of those specific programs, you know, how to run a family business, the accounting behind it, all of that sort of thing. Also, franchising, how do you run a franchise, work with corporate, et cetera? It was interesting, certificates for those programs. So we have not set a next meeting. I will assume it will be not the 4th, not July 4th, but the week after. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Sharp. All right, human resources, trustee Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By the way, Dr. Grove, if you're in need of rooms for those meetings, hotel rooms, I know where you can get some. Our committee met on June 7th and discussed three things. One was the nondiscrimination statement. You'll recall that is really focusing around the discussion of gender identity and gender expression. We have discussed that. We feel we need one more meeting to discuss that before we bring it to the full board and we'll be doing so at our July executive, or our human resources meeting, which is actually going to be June 28th. And we expect then to have a statement for you to consider at our July board meeting. We talked about the compensation study and as you know, we've completed the three phases of the HAY adjustment based on that salary study. The discussion really focused on, do we leave it now and walk away or do we continue to try and maintain what we have? And our discussion focused on that we think we need to have some kind of maintenance going on forward. Dr. Corb will be reviewing sources for an RFP. HAY may be the study. There may be other options that we might utilize. She's pursuing options with ACCT to make sure that we maintain what we have and we'll, we're considering doing the faculty as the first group of that three-year, one-third segment each year over a three-year period. We also then talked about criminal background, check policy and procedure. We're discussing what detail we want there. Again, we'll discuss that in more detail in June and hopefully have something for you in July. We did move into executive session and I would defer any other comments to trustee Rail and Dr. Callaway.
Thank you, trustee Cook. I think you covered it well. I did want to mention, just very briefly, that the, in the event that anyone is wondering about the time lag on the nondiscrimination statement, it's really been an effort for us to fully explore the procedures that might interplay with any revision we made to the statement to make sure that everything is in order and fully anticipated before we take any final step. So, it certainly hasn't been that we've put it on a back burner somewhere. So, that should be coming forward relatively quickly and I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, that moves us next to the president's recommendations for action. We'll begin with the treasurer's report and I will turn to trustee Dr. Drummond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would refer your attention to tab 6, behind tab 6, on 10 pages there, 31 through 41. You will find the treasurer's report, many, many pages of numbers there for you to study. Just to point out a couple of highlights, on page 31, the report states that as of April 30th, all of our accounts at First National Bank have been closed and we've transferred all our accounts to our new bank. As you study the report, I would suggest to you that all the financial activities are progressing as we had planned in terms of budgets, et cetera. The auxiliary fund on pages 34 to 35, the revenue to date are $11,793,000 plus change. That's up about $367,000 over expenses, about 3.2 percent. That's not necessarily a report, but that's a calculation. Then on page 41, you'll see the cash balances from various funds. They show an unencumbered balance of a little over $83 million. Might suggest to you as well that we discussed the college administration working with bond counsel and a financial advisor earlier. We're moving forward with a bank-qualified $10 million revenue bond issued to advance a refund in a portion of Series 2002 revenue bonds. The bonds will be sold at 10:00 a.m. on July 21st and this will be presented that evening to the board for the approval for the sale. We are anticipating that this refinancing will result in savings of about $50,000 a year through fiscal year 2028, total savings of approximately $850,000. So, we've been watching the bond market. The timing seems to be right for us to do the refunding and refinance and save the college quite a bit of money. With that being said, I can suggest that our finances are in order. They're in very good shape as you study the numbers, but we would certainly entertain some questions.
Trustee Chair, thank you. On the auxiliary services report on pages 34 and 35, the revenue to expenditures is very positive as a total, but when I look at some of the line items and I, it would be a question, I'm assuming we have product in inventory and my question becomes how we manage our inventory control. For example, in the dining services, we're, we've expended about $200,000 more than we've taken in in revenue. Vending, museum stores, another one where we've got a lot more expense than revenue. So, my assumption is we have product somewhere and I would expect that that inventory control would offset that difference.
You'd think that, trustee Cook. And I think the most accurate representation of these performances will be at the end of the fiscal year when everything balances out.
I realize this is through April and so...
Right.
The food service in general tends to be a profitable venture for us. The museum store's not been as profitable and we've had a lot of conversation over the past several months related to that and also some of our projections related to how we deal with having as much product as we do in the museum store. So, you're right on target with your question. Some of our challenges in the museum store have to do with some of that, but by the end of the year, you'll, where you'll see the auxiliary with the food service to a very significant positive. Museum store, we're keeping our fingers crossed for a breakeven.
Thank you.
Minor question. On the page 41 in our cash, we have an account with Main Street Credit Union with $38.16. What's that all about and are we closing that out or?
I think that we got a toaster.
So...
We reeled that account over years ago when we had Main Street Credit Union issue credit cards just to designate staff and we still have a few credit cards. We have about five cards and we need that account to main street credit cards.
Okay. All right.
If we got toasters from that, that was a long time ago.
Toaster.
All right, trustee John.
It's a recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month of April 2011, subject to audit. And I would so move that.
All right, we have a motion. Anyone care to second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We got a buyer. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Dr. Drummond, does that complete your treasurer's report?
That completes our report for the evening. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We'll now move to the advisory committees and monthly reports to the board. Dr. Callaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, under tab 7, you'll see a request by the administration for the board to consider our college-wide advisory councils and committees. Those advisory councils and committees were shared with you through Supplement B that was in your board packet this month. These advisory councils range across the board of curriculum and other activities that we have at the college and we ask members, volunteers from the community and from the region to come in and share their expertise with us. They help us keep our curriculum fresh and other kinds of processes on track from a business perspective. And as has been our practice, each year we ask this board to consider those advisory committees and take action to approve those as they were seen in Supplement B. So, it is the recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve advisory committees as contained in Supplement B in your packet. And the terms of these committee members' service will run from July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012.
Someone care to make that motion?
So moved.
All right, and second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and I'm sorry.
No, just a comment. There are 55 committees, if I counted correctly, and I just really want to commend everybody involved. That's a lot of people giving input to the programs that take place here. Trustee Mitchellson said earlier at the podium, "This college transforms lives." And the, it just seems to me that the time that those individuals give on those 55 committees is really invaluable and I just want to applaud everybody for managing that, whether it's within a department or whether it's throughout the college. To me, that's just a remarkable effort to include the community.
Thank you.
And as someone who's served on one of those advisory committees for a number of years before joining the board, that is a mechanism by which the college stays current and relative or it becomes relevant, is the word I'm looking for, to the community and keeps its curriculum with the demand for the businesses out there. And it plays an extraordinarily important part in keeping the college on the right track. So, again, I commend everyone that serves on those committees and the amount of staff time that it takes to coordinate and hold those advisory meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And under tab 8, you'll see my monthly report to the board with just a host of activities and recognitions that have occurred since this last report to the board. I'll just point out one or two to you. On the first page of my report, you'll see our anthropology program is just beginning to, we'll be participating again this summer in their archaeological field school in Honduras and we're very, very proud of them. You might remember last year they had planned to go and then due to some of the safety issues chose, we chose to encourage them to stay home and they did. So, they, that travel advisory's been lifted and so that field school will be going on again this summer and we're very, very thankful to the work of Professor McFarland, who does such a great job with him in the archaeological study. Also, on the second page of my report, I would just point out that, under the first item, that Ron Stinson, who's a professor of music here at the college, is now the reigning North American Cornet Solo Champion. He's a music professor here, as you all know, at our college. He's been involved in helping us develop our Jazz Fest that we began a couple of years ago and he's done just a great job with that and has actually performed at that event. And so, he will be the defending and reigning Cornet Solo Champion through the year and he'll defend his recognition next April at their competition. And then on page four, I would just point out to you that our own Julie Haas was awarded, along with her team, an International Academy of Visual Arts Award. Was awarded, they were awarded a 2011 Communicator Award for the Changing Lives Through Learning Marketing Campaign and the Communicator Award Program honors the best in advertising, corporate communications, public relations and work in print, video and interactive and audio services. And congratulations to Julie. You'll see the whole team that was involved in that, but I know Julie's with us today and congratulations to her and the team on that. With that, if the board has any questions, I'd certainly want to answer those. And if not, Mr. Chairman, that would conclude my report.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, thank you. I do not believe that we have any old business to attend to this evening, so we will move to new business and I'd like to hear from Ms. Kate Allen and Mr. Steve Wilkinson on a very exciting topic here.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to introduce at this time, Mr. Steve Wilkinson. Steve is a former elected official from Garden City, Kansas, I learned tonight, and a current president of Menor Medical Center. Steve's our incoming chair of the foundation and he's also the chair of our research development committee. So, I'm pleased to turn it over to him to give a brief update on our hospitality, management and culinary academy initiative.
Thank you, Kate. I was remarking to Kate earlier that this brought back lots of memories from years of spending evenings around a table like yours. I appreciate your time tonight for a very brief update. I think it was somewhere around 18 months ago that college trustees were considering an important project for the college and the expansion opportunities for the Hospitality Management and Culinary Academy and made a decision to move forward, ask the foundation board to consider being a part of that initiative by doing a capital campaign to raise approximately 30% of the cost of the, of that project and gave us a challenged deadline of August of 2011 to work on that. So, tonight, we're here to share some good news and I do want to say, we appreciate the opportunity to partner with the trustees and with all of you and to be a part of the growth and development of the college. We're very proud of that as well. So, at this time, Kate is going to hand out to you a list of donors to this capital campaign. I also want to say, I am the messenger here. I want to take the opportunity truly to commend the work of Lyndy Robinson, who took this initiative very personal and became the strong leader of this initiative and worked very closely with the members of the foundation board and the capital campaign committee. And she truly was a remarkable leader and her passion was on exhibit all the time as she was making this event or this project a reality. Ona Ashley and Felix Stermer were also very much involved every step of the way and the three of them together are a remarkable team, I'm sure, not only at the culinary program but also clearly within the community and have great respect within the community. It's also important to recognize Joe Sobchak. Dr. Sobchak was very instrumental in the entire campaign as well and as he transitions and transitioned into a different role, but a great deal of the success belongs to Joe as well. And also Dr. Callaway, who made lots of fundraising calls, was very supportive of the initiative, very involved with us and with the effort and it's really a great opportunity for us to see such teamwork and to be involved together in a great manner. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it back to Kate to share more about the results with you. Kate?
Thank you. I know Melody will share later, I believe, our thanks to the culinary campaign committee, which includes trustee Cook and several other volunteers. And I have the easy job of getting to present these final numbers, but really, it's the work of the great folks that were ahead of me before I even began this position to achieve these numbers. So, we're at 3.291 and this is a totally inclusive list of all of the resources available that could be counted towards this initiative. They are listed non-alphabetically but by dollar amount and I'll bring your attention to the bottom key there regarding the asterisks. The first asterisk is the, from the roastery, Danny O'Neill. That'll be an in-kind gift of equipment and of coffee to the program. Right below it is the Kirk Family Foundation and they're doing culinary scholarships. Moving towards the end, the equipment carryover. Ona Ashley and her team have identified more than a quarter million dollars in equipment that is still in good repair and they believe should be transferred to the new facility. So, that decreases the overall expected costs and that's why that is listed there. And then finally, the maintenance and renovations contributions. That is part of the higher education deferred maintenance program offered by the state. We had several donors take advantage of that and those funds are listed in asterisk as non-construction gifts, which means they could not be used for the new facility, but they again are earmarked and could be used to retrofit the existing nine classrooms into classrooms for other programs. So, again, it's a totally inclusive list, including some things like that. That's why they're asterisks are a little bit different. But the total again is 3.291 of all of those funds and gifts. And at this time, I'd just like to thank you all again, let you know that we'll be continuing the campaign. We will be closing up some pending communication that we have with a few more viable prospects probably run us through the fall, but at this point, this is where we stand and I'm happy to entertain with Steve. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Can we say yay?
I believe that would be appropriate at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. I think this makes the third or fourth building now that this board of trustees has suggested and I think it's a very good policy to continue. I'll be a very interested citizen watching you all here as you consider new projects, but to have a private sector equity contribution to a building, we had that with the Renewer Center and the Nerman Gallery. We had it with the Olatha Medical Center project, now that they've donated the ground and now again, we have it with the Culinary Arts Academic Initiative. I think it's just tremendous that we can see that there's a market demand for a new building and a new discipline that we're going to offer and that there's money available to build, to add the public money to, so we can leverage the public money and make it successful. So, I hope that's a policy that everybody on this board continues to some, I don't know what the right percentage is, but have some percentage of private money in every one of these transactions. And I, my congratulations to Joe and Kate and Steve and every, and Dr. Callaway and everybody that worked on it. This is a tremendous success. Great job.
Dr. Cook?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I too would like to thank Mr. Wilkinson, Ms. Allen and Dr. Sobchak and the entire committee. They have really done a magnificent job. And just for the review, I think we were talking about a $10 million project of which $3 million has been raised and... has been raised, and we committed seven. So I'm very interested in the next steps. I know there are additional dollars that we may receive, and Kate has discussed that that's kind of open. But I still believe we're in a period of positive construction with good bids from contractors, and so I'm very curious about what our next steps would be on this project.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, to Dr. Cook's question. As you know, as we were getting closer to the target, we decided to, and this board approved the contracting with, through the RFP process with the architect, and so DLR Group has been working diligently over the last couple of months to get started in putting together the next stage, first cuts of drawings and some projections on actual and real costs. And so we're actually, we've continued on. In fact, we anticipating moving forward, knew that, and you might remember some of our conversations, of what if the money looks different? And so we're going to continue on with that. We expect that somewhere probably in the mid to late part of the fall, we'll have some final drawings and be prepared to start to look at general contractor kinds of work. But I think you're absolutely right. The timing is still good to, for major projects like this, to work with general contractors and get good prices. So we expect good rates and good prices as we move forward. And I would guess sometime in the fall, we'll be, you know, once we have the drawings through, DLR will start to move forward with RFPs related to general contractors. We are also in the site selection process. I know Dr. Grove and I had some conversations today, and we'll start to pull that material together, and probably next month have some, probably through management committee, some discussion related to potential sites on campus where this facility fits the best for all of the various variables. I think you'd, you know, probably ballpark right now, expect mid-fall, probably the next, the next phase would be the general contractor.
I would like to consider, I think, some kind of communication back to the donors with a timeline, because they've made some serious commitments, and they said, well, when is this project going to be? And even if we had some kind of a public relations letter that describes what you've just described, I realize we can't be definite about certain dates, but some assurance that this project is well underway and will actually take place.
Great idea. We'll make sure we do that.
And perhaps, Trustee Cook, as they, as we determine the naming opportunities, once the design comes into play, that'd be another opportunity to communicate with the donors along those lines. If I can add just one thing.
Please.
I'd like to thank Trustee Cook for his involvement on that committee. There were a lot of early morning meetings, which he attended, and also I'd like to acknowledge Trustee Stewart's contribution, which is also listed on here. But equally so, it's important to note that whenever this happens, myself, Kate, Steve, we're always kind of in the spotlight, because that's what we do. But there are a lot of other people that are a big part of this. And for example, we benefited from fantastic publications for this campaign. We had some wonderful technical support to make PowerPoints and to produce things along the line. And we'd have meals in the morning, catering came through, and everything always looked really good. So the successful fundraising campaign really is reflective of an entire campus, and everyone who works on the campus, they're all a part of that. So I just want to make sure that everybody gets the credit for this successful effort.
If I might, just to add to Jill's comments, Mr. Chairman, we also engaged the students in this activity. And I think one of the really bright moments of the campaign process was, in a couple of places, Kate had students walk in the door, and Lindy, with Lindy's support certainly, and leadership, students walk in the door with treats for those who we were asking money. And so we left students work with them. So they got to see the fruits of the labor of the students who were doing some of the things in our pastry program and other things. So if anyone's hungry, let us know, and we'll have the students bring some pastries and other things with them, but we'll probably ask for money, too. But the students were deeply engaged in this, and I think it was a really great strategy and a part of the team, and worked very well.
So are you suggesting that is a new protocol for board meetings?
I second that.
Bring your checkbooks, and we'll...
All right, and thank you. And I also want to make sure that we acknowledge the very generous gift of the Weisong family that kicked this whole project off, and without which probably none of this would happen, or would not certainly be happening in this timeframe. So we very much appreciate their very generous gift.
Thank you to Steve and Kate and the whole team. Thank you. Steve, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, if you'd like.
Thank you.
And I think that concludes our new business. And to provide some continuity with the Culinary Center, I'm going to ask Trustee Rail to provide her foundation report first, and then we'll go back to the normal listings here on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, certainly, this is an exciting report for us to receive. You know, we challenged the Foundation as a board to raise enough money to make this project a reality. And while we were confident, it certainly is nice to reach the goal and realize that we're there. And kudos to Kate, and Steve, and Joe, and the folks who kind of spearheaded what was going on. And I want to make sure that, you know, we've added a lot of thanks here, and everybody had an opportunity to chime in, but I just want to make sure that everyone gets thanked. And so I have kind of an organized list here. I think first, it's important for us to thank each and every individual and organization on this list, because clearly, without their contributions, we wouldn't be celebrating any of this. And, you know, as Chair Weiss mentioned, starting with David Weisong and his most generous gift that got this all off at the beginning. But I want to make sure that we recognize everyone who served on the committee. And so I don't typically list people, but I think it's important in this case that we do that. And so the folks who worked on that committee were Trustee Cook, Ed Holland, Kevin Pistoli, Bob Ranier, Stu Stein, Steve, of course, and David Weisong. And certainly, each and every one of them put forth tremendous effort to see this project to its completion, or at least where we are now. Lindy Robinson, as was mentioned, did a fantastic job at keeping things going. Ona Ashley, also the Director of Hospitality Management, played a pivotal role. And then, of course, there's the wonderful presence of our Hospitality Management Program itself, and executive chef and coach of the culinary team, Felix Stermer, and all of the folks who are a part of that program, who make it look so good, and who make it easy for folks to get their heads wrapped around the idea of a culinary center and the fruits that it can produce. So thanks to everyone who played a part in that. And Kate, well done. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Rail.
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
There's one person that we've missed, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention him, and that's Dick Bond. Dick Bond joined us at several of the meetings, and most particularly the ones we were doing, major-esque, and in many ways was very influential. And he had a chance to say a couple of things that sometimes we wouldn't be able to say. So he was very diligent in helping us with this as well. And, well, I know he wasn't on the committee. He kind of was an ex officio member and did join, I know several of us in several meetings, and just was a good partner in this one. So I just want to publicly recognize Senator Bond as well, and thank him for his service.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to turn now to Trustee Mitchellson for his very last Kansas Association of Community College trustee report, and the Johns County Research Triangle report. So, Trustee Mitchellson.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. The Kansas Association of Community College trustees met last weekend in Kansas City, Kansas, on the 10th and 11th of June, and we were lucky to have great representation of Johns County Community College. Several trustees were there. Dr. Joe Sobchik represented the administration, and I think it really paid off. You could tell from the other trustees that come from around the state, that they appreciate that Johnson County had great attendance there. The next KACC meeting will be in September, and by that time, you will have selected a new representative to attend. It has been an honor for me to be part of KACC. I've been serving as treasurer, and they elected a new treasurer effective with the academic year July 1. A lot of good things have gone on in that association. The treasurer's report was one of ample funds, so assessments will not be increased among the participating 19 colleges. There's a marketing program that we did not have at one time. And there is general agreement on the tiered funding for technical education, if the state should ever have ample resources so that they could fund that. So there's a lot of good things that have happened in KACC, and I give a lot of the credit to Dr. Callaway and his participation in that, and giving intentional interest all the way through the last few years to get, to show that Johns County Community College could balance its perhaps more affluent financial situation with that of some of the other community colleges that are struggling with lower assessed valuations and smaller budgets. So I think we're more readily accepted in that organization than we used to be, and I urge this board to always have someone who's really active and participating in it, hopefully plays a role as an officer going forward, and someone who'll go to the September meetings. It was a really good opportunity for me, and I'm really going to miss the chance to be with everybody.
And I want to particularly thank you for the many, many, what probably seem like fruitless hours that you spent on working with the other colleges in KACC, particularly related to the distribution formulas. I know that was a very frustrating time for you to work with that when there didn't seem to be much progress being made, but certainly something that's been much appreciated by this college. So I want to thank you for your efforts in that. And I wouldn't be surprised if it takes two trustees to replace you as a liaison to KACC.
Okay, moving ahead with J-CERT, we had a meeting this Monday at 8:00 a.m., and this was the first meeting we've held at the K-State Innovation Campus, roughly Highway K-7 and College Boulevard. It's a beautiful new building, and it gave us a chance to see what the resources are that K-State will be bringing to our community. The J-CERT Board is moving along. The receipts are slightly below what was projected when the enabling legislation was passed in November of 2008. We originally thought there was going to be sales tax revenue from the 1.08 cent sales tax that was passed in November of 2008, about 15 million a year with $5 million to each college, and there's more like about 13 and a half million right now with the effects of the recession and the financial crisis of 2008. So it's not quite as much money as each institution had expected, but it's enough to fund each institution's construction project. If you've been down Cauvera, you've seen the best building emerging on the Edwards Campus, the structural steel's up there. They've started construction up in Fairway in the office building that the Hall family has given to the Med Center, where clinical trials will hopefully be done before long, and we'll get some National Cancer Institute recognition there. And of course, the K-State building is already finished and is occupied, and is a very attractive addition to Johnson County. So J-CERT is off and running, and I look forward to learning who's going to serve, represent this board going forward. It's been an honor for me to be part of it since, for the past two and a half years. It really is a miracle that it passed, I believe, in November of 2008, and it's a tremendous benefit. The dividends really haven't even started to unfold for Johnson County and this community. But we're right in the middle of the triangle, and I think we might be the biggest beneficiary of any, even though none of the money flows directly to Johnson County Community College. So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve on J-CERT. It's been a great opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Collegial Steering Committee, Trustee Rail.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Collegial Steering Committee met this afternoon just prior to this meeting, and it was a relatively short meeting. We had a single item on the agenda, and that was the continued discussion of the designation of a Master of Fine Arts degree as a specialist degree for compensation purposes. It's a topic that's been discussed over the past several months, in keeping with the rigorous curriculum that is required to attain a Master of Fine Arts, and the academic standard, if you will, around the country. That's something that the faculty's been trying to get done, and I believe we're there as of the academic year 2011, 2012. The Master of Fine Arts will be considered a specialist degree for purposes of compensation, and that was the only item on our agenda today. So that concludes my report, and I see Jeff making his way to the podium for Faculty Association.
All right, thank you. And we always look forward to, Mr. Anderson, to your report. So Faculty Association.
Good evening. Very happy to be able to tie that issue up tonight, Collegial Steering, regarding the MFA degree. It's been out there as an ongoing issue for probably over a decade, I'm sure. And it was really, I think, a good example of how Collegial Steering Process can work, because everyone participated in this process. People on both sides of the table did research. They were involved in discussions, and I think we came to a good decision that's going to benefit folks that have long been waiting for this benefit to come their way. So I'm very happy about that, and very glad that we were able to sign ink to the paper tonight, even though I signed it in the wrong place, but we got that fixed. We were able to get through that little gaff there, so. So I just want to take a few moments to thank Lynn Mitchellson, and want to thank you for your commitment to the college. You know, you've been here for 15 years, and I'm sure it's been a big part of your life during those 15 years. And you know, the thing I've always liked about your commitment to the college is that you were here for a service-type commitment. It wasn't an idea that you wanted to be here to launch your career in another direction or aspire to a higher office. You were here because you wanted to serve the college. You had an interest in this place and an interest in people who worked here, and I'll always be grateful for that. And so I think it speaks a lot to your personal character and your integrity. You didn't come from a higher education background, but you became a student of the enterprise of higher education. You've asked a lot of questions along the way. You, I've been in a lot of meetings over the years with you, and you're always coming there and you're always taking notes and always asking questions. I've always been impressed by that. You're really into the discussion, and you get very involved in that process. So I've always liked that. You've been a great mentor to the board members here today, and many board members in the past, and that's been a major influencing factor in terms of where we stand today, too, I think. So you've led us through some good times, some embarrassing times, and some difficult times, but through that process, you've been a voice of reason, and a steady influence in terms of your leadership with the board here, too. I've always sensed that your heart's been in the right place, no matter what we do and no matter where we go. The only regret I have is that, due to the nature of our respective positions, we found ourselves at times at opposite ends of the table, at times. But after tonight, that's no longer the case, and so I'm happy to say that. Our loss at the college will certainly be the Baxter Springs Bank's gain. I can't imagine them getting a better person to step in and lead and to guide them to a better place. And tonight, we're here in the Hugh Spear Boardroom, and Dr. Spear was, I hear, many years ago, and probably at a time before, most of you guys were even here. He was a pretty colorful character and maybe a little eccentric, but that was good, I thought. And he wound up having a room named after his service here. And so I'm hoping, in your case, Lynn, you've been here for 15 years, that you'll wind up maybe with a building with your name on it someday. So, again, I want to thank you, and good luck in your future here.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
That's it.
All right. I think Trustee Mitchellson deserves another very warm round of applause at this point.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. I'll let you talk to the regulators.
Perhaps you could get him to come down to Baxter Springs and say all those nice things. I'll let you there, too.
Get all the cheers I can get.
All right. We come to the Second Petitions and Communications Section of our agenda. And again, the Petitions and Communications Section is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak either at the first or second petitions and communications sections, but not both. And prior to beginning the comments, we ask that you state your name, your address, city and state. And do we have anyone that would like to address the board at this time that has not pre- previously addressed the board this evening? Yes?
James Freed, 11600 West 127th Terrace, Overland Park, Kansas. I'd like to preface this, my apologies to Dr. Callaway and Dr. Grove, that I didn't give you any advance warning, because I wasn't planning to be up here tonight until trustee Rail inspired me to bring forward some information. Prior to the 15 years, I've had the pleasure of working for JCC. I worked for eight years for the Blue Valley School District. Many of the administrators are not there that were there at the time, but at that time, they went through a similar process as the college with an RFP and considering outsourcing, which they did do. And I'm not going to mention the company's name, but that situation during the course of the year-plus that they worked with them, there was some criminal activities that occurred, allegations, and I believe there was some prosecution that may have occurred after that, where some of the management that the outsourcing company put into place that ran buildings and grounds and housekeeping were actually conducting business activities using school district equipment after hours. Now, that was probably perceived to be a very extraordinary circumstance. But in that particular instance, like the colleges talked about, those companies offered the opportunity for college employees to go to work with them. Typically, the school district employees took a salary cut, and typically those companies offered no benefits to those employees. And so many of those employees had families, livelihoods, they couldn't take a 20-plus percent cut and benefits. I mean, if any of us think about whatever our income level is, to take that kind of cut and to lose benefits, many of those housekeepers, custodians left to seek other employment. Of course, it's a very difficult time to do that with the economy. But when the school district went through that situation, I believe that it was about the time I came here, but I believe they ultimately terminated that contract and went back to in-house housekeeping. I can only tell you, because I, as an architect, and I develop and build the buildings, I take a certain pride in the buildings, and I can only speak for myself personally. But I can tell you that I saw a significant decline in the quality of the services during that time and the upkeep of the buildings. That's just me personally. But I would definitely encourage some conversation with Blue Valley Schools, and especially perhaps trying to get a hold of some of the administration. I believe there was a lot of this in the newspaper, so it might be of some value as the college moves forward. I can only tell you, again, from a personal standpoint, that, you know, if we're considering something that, with our employees, that includes benefits and we're comparing them to proposals that maybe don't include the same level of benefits, it seems like it's apples to oranges, and I would hope there's some process, given the college is committed to these people, their families and the livelihood for 45 years, that there's an equalization factor in considering that. And I know this board has that in their heart, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the second communications and petition section and move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a part of the agenda where the board considers in one motion a number of items that are considered to be routine, and unless anyone would care to pull any of those particular items, we will consider them all in one motion. And I will turn to Dr. Callaway for comments regarding the items in today's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just point you to tabs nine through 15 in your packet this evening, which includes curriculum, regular monthly reports, through the minutes of your previous meetings, cast dispersments, bids, gifts and grants, and then our human resources report and addendum. And it'll be the recommendation administration that will consider the consent agenda this evening.
I'd still move the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion? All right, seeing none, we will consider all the items. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's pass. That concludes the public portion of our meeting tonight. We will have an executive session this evening, so I'd like to entertain a motion to go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed and consultation with an attorney, which will be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with attorney on legal matters. I anticipate that this session will last about 60 minutes. We may be good done earlier, but they tend to run long, so we'll say 60 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. And at this time, I would like to invite Mark Ferguson, Terry Callaway, and Terry Schlicht to participate in that, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by trustee Rail and a second by trustee Mitchellson. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will take a five-minute break and reconvene for our executive session at 7:00. We are back from a 60-minute executive session. No action was taken. We will be extending that executive session for another 30 minutes. And so at this time, we are adjourned again from the public session, and we'll return in 30 minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion. To that effect, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of individuals to be discussed. Consultation with an attorney would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. This second executive session will last for 30 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. We'd like to invite Mark Ferguson, Dr. Terry Callaway, and Terry Schlicht to join the executive session, and I'll entertain a motion at this time. It's moved by trustee Mitchellson and seconded by trustee Rail. And we will start at 8:03 and continue for 30 minutes. And did we vote on this, or? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, motion passes. We'll go into executive session.